Thank you everyone for coming to our meeting is September 23rd. At this time, I'd ask for, is there any agenda additions or deletions?
There's one thing on highway, the road and bridge standards for deletion.
To delete them?
To delete.
Is there a seconded up motion?
A second for discussion?
Alright, is there any discussion?
I thought tonight was the last night we could approve them to be within the deadline. That they have to be done by October 1st.
You're right, but I'm right here in the packet.
I could be wrong, that was my understanding, that we had to do them tonight. I would say it's probably a Brian Sanderson question.
June 5th of 2019 is on the top, so we need to.
That was when they were updated.
Correct.
But I believe that the adoption date, maybe we can Google it quick, maybe Gloria can Google it when they have to be. For some reason, my understanding was they had to be approved by October, adopted by October 1st.
You can adopt them, isn't it?
Let me look at my email. You thought they were past due?
Yeah, and they wanted them, you're right Gloria. And they're giving us till October 1st.
Brian's email just said, "Good day, I'll just reminder that you must submit to me a signed copy of the new 2019 Town Road and Bridge Standards." With the appropriate items circled and or filled in, but he does not have a date on his email.
But in, when she sent that email out, didn't she have a date on it?
John?
I was not copied on that. Her, the email that I have from her just said-
I think that's what you're talking about.
This came through from Brian Sanderson indicating that Clarendon needs to adopt them and submit a completed form. I will put the issue on the next one more agenda. That is all I have.
Basically, it's what is signing it.
Yeah.
With a select board. Oh, we can do that.
Alright.
We can adopt it.
Alright, we'll have further discussion when we get down to highway.
So you're gonna withdraw your motion?
Withdraw my motion.
I do have some other things that are not as for Joe Peterson's subcontractor to do the trail work, just needs to be- It's a document that just needs to be signed, approved and signed by the select board chair.
Alright, and we can put that under new business? No, old business.
Old business.
Yeah. Is there anything else? Hmm?
Where are you?
Oh, if I could see it all now. Alright.
So I just found the email from Brian Sanderson, it looks like we could do them next time. And apparently, there is information in here, Cash, that we need to fill in.
Mm-hmm. What does it say? What is the record?
It doesn't give a specific date, the email just came through from Brian Sanderson. The email came through on September 10th, it looks like. And it just says, "Please, for those of you who have not submitted this yet, a reminder that these are due," but he doesn't give a due date.
And there was a big list there of towns that hadn't adopted this yet.
Well, he sent it to everybody and said, "Those of you who have not done this, please take special notice."
Well, what we can do is, we could, we could hold off on it. Is there things that you have to fill out on it?
Yeah, it's highlighted, this whole email is highlighted where there's, where it's gotta be filled in.
With yellow, right?
I'll go to that color one for Cash.
Yeah.
The highlights.
So, the least we can do is get back to him and say, "We'll make a decision in our first meeting in October."
The other option you can do is just-
Why can't we?
authorize Cash to do it once it's filled in. Cause I don't believe it's, this is not everybody.
I just have him sign it?
We have a-
There's a select board?
Yeah.
Right here.
Place for five to sign it.
Okay, well, whatever you wanna do. I would say then it-
Well, let me, let me suggest this. Have Cash work on this tomorrow. And also Gloria or Heidi, can you call up Brian and find out if we can wait till the first Monday in October, first meeting in October? If not, we're meeting tomorrow night.
Let's just do it tomorrow night, forget it.
Forget it filmed out.
That's fine. Works for me.
Yep, fine to me.
Do it tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, first thing.
Okay, so then this is still gonna be a deletion off of tonight's agenda?
Yes.
We're still under additions and deletions?
Okay.
Well, apparently they didn't delete it, they discussed it.
I know.
We gotta make a motion to do both, you gotta add this and do-
My motion again to add the road and bridge standards. And then-
Tonight's meeting. Is there a second for that?
No, wait. Not to add it to-
Delete it.
Tomorrow's agenda, delete it off tonight's agenda.
Delete it off tonight's agenda, and to add it to-
We'll go with that.
And to add Joe Peterson?
No, Joe Peterson's gonna be tonight.
I know.
Yeah.
And make a motion to add Joe Peterson, the town forest.
To tonight.
For tonight's discussion.
I'll second it.
What do you think of that, Art?
Good thing it's a nice, small town.
Yeah.
And not many here.
Alright, there's been a motion B several times. All in favor of the last motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Can I oppose?
It's been a long day and I'm not even working.
Alright, that's for all of you.
Yeah. Alright. Right now, I would ask for the approval of the regular meeting minutes, September 9th. Is there any corrections or deletions?
No, I move accept them as presented.
There a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any corrections or deletions? Hearing not all, those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Thanks for getting those out. I'd ask for a motion with regard to the special workshop, September 16th, 2019.
No move.
Is there a second?
I don't know if I saw those minutes, but-
I don't have them.
It was very-
What was, what was that meeting?
It was an executive session to discuss who we're gonna interview.
Yeah, that's all.
And it was a-
Oh, we stayed in here actually, remember?
Okay.
Motion to go in, a motion to come out.
That's all. As I recall.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you Gloria.
No, Cash made it and Bob seconded it, I think.
It did?
Yeah.
Bob motions, and nobody seconded it.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, somebody did.
Somebody did.
Cash seconded it.
I'll, I'll second it. No, I didn't, I did. Oh, my word. Way re-edited.
Robert's rules of orders are out the window.
It's been a long day.
Oh, it's been a long day, you understand.
That's right.
Under highway, road commissioners report, please be clear.
Take your time. Just there yet. Football night. Oh, hurry up.
The operations of football night, let's take our time.
Are the roads still there? Good.
Next. On the operations of the town, Ben Hall, Winter Sand, finished most of the project on East 10th Road, and we have quite an extensive project with the grader, we got quite a bit to our part on it, and at the town garage. With the radiator cooling system. That's about all I have for now.
Any board members having questions for a road commissioner? Does anybody in town have a question for a road commissioner?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to say, I've been over that road several times in the last few days, and that is a very nice job. Here's the, on East 10th Road, where you guys have been fixing the road up that way? Oh, okay, yeah. That looks great.
Thank you. Thanks to the crew.
Anybody else in town have any questions for a road commissioner? Oh, this could be a road commissioner question. Mr. Knox.
Road is all set.
Okay.
You smell your-
Yeah, I, I gotta sign it.
That's a skunk, what are you talking about?
Alright. Roast, bridge standards, we're gonna-
Till tomorrow.
Table till tomorrow.
Warrants are floating and drifting. There's no guests, but is there any public comments?
There's a guest, well.
Louis, are you gonna be a guest, or you just want a public comment?
Um, no, I have an issue, so whatever, that classifies.
That's on, is it a road issue?
Oh, I will, I will say you did a fantastic job on East Clarendon Road. Very good.
Alright, then, public comments. You have a public comment, Louis?
Did a good job on the road.
Thank you.
Do you have any concerns at all?
On the road?
No, on anything.
In general?
There's another issue, I think.
Your turn, you're up.
Okay, it's my turn?
Yes.
That's what they're trying to tell you.
Okay, well, this is my first meeting, and I'm a little slow when it comes to stuff, so anyway. So Gloria will know, and they might have a neighbor that, isn't probably the easiest person to get along with. And some of the issues that has arisen there, I don't believe are being addressed. Or some of them are newer, that haven't had a chance to. Between a failed septic system, aggressive dogs that run loose. Kids riding motorcycles, I know we have no noise ordinance, so I'm kinda screwed up. When they go into the road, 10-year-old kids shouldn't be running dirt like something else. And so we actually have a, the lack of police presence, and I know you can only, you gotta spread it so thin. You know, you just don't have the budget for it, but, so they kinda run amok, although yesterday, the sheriffs were at their house. And I, I think that has to do with the dogs, because yesterday, the dogs were in my yard. Now, last Sunday, I wasn't home, but the dogs were in my yard, they're two pit bulls, and my wife couldn't get them to the gazebo, because they're trying to bite her. Yesterday, when I came out of her garage, the older pit bull had already left, the younger one was there, he's a lot of bark, no bite. I presume they went over to Carl Anderson's to the campground, and he probably called the sheriff, because they were very aggressive yesterday. It's easy to say, "Oh, they come in my yard, I'm gonna shoot them." Because then you open a different can of worms, you know. You know, people are gonna, it's gonna be turned into judgment. Today, I had my grandson, he's three years old, little guy, and I had to carry him to the house, because he's afraid of the pit bulls, and they weren't even old. He won't even go out in the yard and play. I have a house, I'm retired now, and when I retired, I expected I was gonna be able to enjoy my property. There's about five issues there, but you gotta pick your fights. But here's one I wanna bring up, can I come up?
Yep, sure can.
This is a septic at 10:04 today. Now, this morning, at 6:30, I walked over there, was all the way to the yellow line. So I walked up on their property, it's boiling out of the ground, okay? So they have no leach field, so their leach field is blocked, so it's coming up out of the paint. Now, I've called Richard numerous times, getting nowhere. And he's, his excuse, he's always got an excuse, well, his camp, as long as it's not leaving their property, or this and that, well, this has been going on since April. Okay, and it's hard to have somebody come over to your house, when that's what you smell, okay? I don't believe those, somewhere along the line, somebody's gotta be able to step up and say, "That's unacceptable." Because when they drive in front of my house, they track it in front of my house, when we drive into our garage, if you're coming from the south, you go down 7B, and around that way, so you don't drive and track it in your garage, I think. You know, after five months, I think somebody should be contacting the state. You know, today, by the end of the day, that's still a lot to be there, and the only reason there wasn't more is because nobody was in the house.
What's the street address?
Pardon?
What is the street address?
Mine is 2436, so theirs is the next one. But, in that picture, you can see the stream where it's running down, so. I mean, somewhere along the line, it's gotta be unhealthy.
Can I feed in on this? I've been contacted by a few different people that live up in that area, about the situation. I have called their health officer two different occasions, and supposedly, both times, he's visited the site, and like Louis said, he's, nothing has transpired nor happening. The last time I called Jeff, or Zoney.
Okay, zoning, yeah.
The last conversation I had with him about two weeks ago, was he actually said something about getting the state involved. So that's where that at, and I haven't heard from him since, so.
And that's basically two weeks ago that I got, but, somewhere along the line is, this is the worst that it's, it's been, even in the, in the spring, it ran all the way, almost to Beacon Heights, it was running down the road before, and it was like, six weeks before we got anything. Now, when it, when you can hear it bubbling out of the ground, I mean, what's the timetable of the state gonna, you know?
Well, the worst, worst thing there is about this, we haven't had rain in six, eight days. So we know it's not raining right now.
So that's what his, and I will, you know, I would give him the benefit of the doubt in the spring, when Richard came over, said, "I really didn't see it." But, when I would call him and say, you know, "It's running out of the ground," if that's where your job is in the town, I believe that you should come over and, and I know it's a, you know, it's probably a tough situation to go up to the people's house and say, you know.
Yeah, but that's what your job is.
That's your job. As far as I'm concerned, if there's leaks that much, what are they doing living there?
It's a health concern.
I mean, it's a health concern, not, their kids playing and they digging it, so it's like, but then, why should I track it into my house? Why should I have to breed it, when you can't enjoy your property, because of the stench sometimes, like, you know, and I, I tried to keep, you know, be decent about it, not raising, you know, the men hollering and screaming, but, you know, it's probably getting, I'm getting to my wit's end on, you know. The whole situation is, everything just keeps growing, but you're gonna pick two fights, and to me, the dogs and the septic are probably.
If I have, you have Richard Griffith's phone number? And they're locked in?
I haven't.
Do you have it?
Why don't you give it to me? I don't have my phone with me at this time, because I wanted a quiet night.
I'll see if I can find it.
I'll call him right now. And what did Jeff say?
Jeff said that he apparently had visited a site, and he was actually, it sounds like it's a state issue with help. And that's all I heard from Jeff, so I think Jeff would be the one to-
Did he say what department of state he was gonna get in touch with? Have you heard anything, Louis, did he say anything to you about who in the state he was gonna contact? It's gonna be environmental somebody.
But, let me, I'll tell you what, let me call him tomorrow, I'll stop down here, and then call him from here, so that I have witnesses that we're having this discussion.
All septic designs now have to go through the state.
That's right, it's all state.
So, he know, he has a, he has a phone number or address to that place?
Yeah, he's been there.
Yeah, okay.
Numerous times.
Alright. Well.
The other thing is to get it stronger on the sheriff's radar then for the dogs, right?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, today, and at work, one of our deputies asked about, who did we have for a dog person? Well, actually, we're handling that, so I will, I will advise a dispatch to give that to the deputy in town. And then, have to check that out.
Because we have a lease law.
We do?
I mean-
It should be registered, I don't know if they're even registered, nobody's even called me, asked me about it.
I'm not really sure.
Yeah. Afterwards, just give me your, give me your phone number, so I can give it to the deputy, and afterward done tonight.
It's about, two months ago, I had a, one of the other neighbors call me that lives a ways from, from you, but I'm not far from that road. And she was really upset, and she's a person about getting environmental involved and everything else, and kinda threatened me in a sense, and I, so that's when I got hold of-
Hey Jeff, this is Mike Clapson.
Do what I can do.
At a select board meeting right now, and we have an individual who lives on, it's Clarendon Road, next to where that septic system is having an issue, have you contacted anybody yet on that? Yeah.
I should be up to Richard Griffith, he should do. Yeah. I had one complaint from up there earlier in the year, and I told him to call Richard, and then I never heard no more, so, I didn't realize it was going on again.
Hold on a second, Jeff. Alright, hold on one, hold on one second. The individual who was at the meeting, you could talk, talk to him real quick.
This is Jeff?
Hello.
Jeff.
Hi.
Jeff is saying that he's been up there three different times, and he hasn't seen any issues.
Um, no, he didn't speak to me.
Well, doesn't Richard have the authority to issue citations on that, I believe, does he? And then it would have to go to the state, but hell, I believe.
One would think.
Richard Griffin, but when I talked to him, he was claiming the same thing, he didn't see it.
I've been, I've been up there and seen a stream right down the road, right down.
Is it in his front yard? Is it coming out of his front yard?
Yeah, it's coming out of the lawn.
So where, where is this?
Right next to Louis.
Right on our new pavement.
It's Iroquois, and then I think him, and then-
We got Iroquois, this house, and then Louis.
That's where you cross some doreens or norines, or?
No, norines, just coming across.
Well, he's more up close with the lock cabin?
Yes, he's, almost a lock cabin out by Wendy Lane. And it's pretty obvious, it was raining even this summer, when I was up there, there was still water in the road coming down through. And the real track, and we hadn't had no rain. And it was just in that one spot. And that's where I got hold of Mr. Griffin, and two different times.
While that's being discussed.
Before I brought the issue of noise ordinance in town. Now, we're not just shooting on Sunday nights, we're now shooting at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. I don't know what they're using for targets, but.
Where's this at? Behind your house?
Somewhere up there in the, cause, next door neighbor actually was talking to me about it, said, "Why are they shooting at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night?" I said, "'Cause you don't go down to complain to the select board like I do."
Hello. Right, he did, he brought them here.
Of course, now it's gonna rain. Yeah, of course it is wet.
No, what I'm saying, it'll screw up seeing what, at least you got pictures.
Yeah, bottle that.
So Louis, we shouldn't put shoulders on the road. Now, if we didn't put shoulders on the road-
Could you do that for me, and then, and then either give me a call on this phone, or give- No.
It really started acting up two weeks ago, they had their fuel truck back up over their leach field, loaded, and the next day, it was like, they don't have much of a leach field, I mean, they've had all kinds of problems in the last year.
Alright.
You drive a tanker, back it up there, and it was like-
Freddy didn't get stopped.
Let me ask Louis, Louis, do you have the neighbor's phone number?
I'm not with me.
Well, what's the name?
Timmy Simons.
Tim Simons is the name.
Do you got the dogs too?
Well, he's not the one that owns the property, correct?
Some say his father, but if you look at the tax report, I think the tax report said Tim, but I might be wrong in one way or the other.
Is it Simons or Simmons?
Simmons.
Simmons.
It should be John was the owner, that's the dad. But he's a old man, he's, he's not doing well.
Now, I think it wasn't too bad of an issue until they used the lawn for motocross track.
Yeah, and all of a sudden, instead of parking in the driveway, they drive around the house, and they drive across the septic.
Well, what bothers me is, they don't have a permit for driveway access.
Alright, well, I appreciate it, and any information?
You know, when I first moved there, and the kid was about six, seven years old, I said, "Well, it'd be kinda bad," I said, "Well, the kid's gonna move all summer later." He's 37, he's got four kids, eleven cats, ten ducks.
Well, hold on a second.
Gloria, you recall if they have their dogs registered?
Have we had?
No.
What did we do with that?
Maybe just check, see if they're registered.
I think next meeting. We're gonna do it first meeting in October, right?
Yeah. Alright, I asked Rob. Well, the, yeah. Yeah, the first meeting in October. And what date is that?
14th.
October 14th.
October 14th. Alright, then we look forward to seeing you. Alright, and then you're gonna follow up though with this sort of thing. Yeah, okay.
See that, Robert?
Alright.
See how nicely I'm- See how nicely I'm adjusting?
Bye.
No, thank you.
You don't want dinner.
What do you want?
Louis, he's calling up the state tomorrow.
That's my bad, I'm sorry.
Give a call here. You have me, or he'll talk with Gloria. Alright?
Yep, and we're gonna get the sheriffs on the dogs.
Absolutely.
So we're gonna see what we can do. Let us know if there's no improvement, and we'll take it to the next step.
And I'll tell them about your gunshots you're hearing late at night, we do some late night stuff, they can sit over there for a little bit.
I was sitting in there with the TV on, and the TV was actually kinda loud, and I thought at first, well, I didn't really hear that, must've been TV, but the dog heard it, he let me know that it was real, and so, you know, you turn the TV down and you can hear even more.
There's a lot of violence on TV, you know.
Well, I know.
NCIS and all that good stuff. NCIS and all that good stuff.
I was watching Six Feet Under and there's not a lot of violence on that.
I'm not even looking.
We don't want to discuss that.
It's aftermath.
All right. I know. Do you have anything?
No, just ask them.
All right, if there's no other public comments, we're going to move on to old business and that would be Joe Peterson. And want to refresh our memories?
Sure, um, at the end of the fiscal year, you all voted to contract out, um, trail maintenance, um, to Joe. And he has brought forward a subcontractor to work on that for you. And the subcontractor has already signed the agreement that Joe brought forward and you all just need to vote on it and have Mike sign.
Okay, and what it essentially says is, we hereby submit specifications, estimates for trail creations, maintenance, and drainage to include the following. Trail maintenance, removal of debris, smoothing hazardous trees, et cetera, from the trails, new trail layout and trail building, uh, creation of two or three connecting trails, improved drainage and existing and new trails with a focus on the eastern portion of the property adjacent to the marsh. Trail blocking, uh, to exclude ATVs. Um, to be accomplished in approximately two days with two men, forester supervision, one excavator, and one bulldozer. Estimated cost, three five hundred, we already-
Yep. Those funds have already been given out to Joe.
Right, so he's going to-
So, we're going to make the motion that we have the board chairman sign this agreement, since it's already in motion anyway.
Hold on a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Done and done. Anything on our new business? Town officers report. Gloria, do you have any, anything?
I do not.
Heidi?
Yes, sir. Uh, tax bills went out and the taxes will be due Saturday, October nineteenth. Um, so in October, I will be open Monday, the seventh through the eleventh, that is Monday through Friday from ten to four. And then the week they are due, I'll be open the fourteenth through the nineteenth, that's a Monday through Saturday, ten to four. Um, and usually, from now till then, usually I'm here between ten thirty and eleven in the morning until four sometimes and I'll be here a little bit later.
Could that get on the website somehow?
I think it already is.
Is it already on?
It is on. Please. If we get early, do we get a lollipop?
Sure, there's always candy for taxpayers, always.
I have the chalk.
Don't tell it, buddy.
That's why I go in that way. That's why I go in that door first.
That's why I go to Gloria's.
Art, do you have anything from the Listers, given that you're just kind of hanging out?
Uh, no.
Okay. Bob, do you have any concerns?
No, I'm good tonight.
Yes?
I'm all set.
By me. Rob?
I'm all set.
Rick?
I'm all set.
I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Back up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Maybe.